I'd like to call to order the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four school committee meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. We typically have a student representative, but Mackenzie could not be with us tonight, so we'll just, I think, move that off to next, next meeting. So first order of business, my move to approve the meeting minutes from June third and August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? No questions? They look good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Over to you, Mr. Barrow.
All right. So we thankfully have a lot of new staff here tonight. Thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate taking your time to come and be in front of the school committee and the public, and you've started out doing a wonderful job, so thank you for that. We'll start with some district staff. Mary Jufry, the Howard School Principal, did introduce herself last week at the meeting, so we'll skip on by, Mary, so thank you for all you're doing. And I'd like to start out with Mark Nabrega, our Director of Building and Grounds. Please.
My name is Mark Nabrega. I am the new Director of Maintenance for the School Department. I have worked for the School Department for the past fourteen years as a maintenance person, and I am excited about my new position and look forward to serving the community in my new role. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Next, we have Mrs. Page is going to introduce the middle, senior, and high school staff.
Thank you. So first up, we have Jacob Belcher, who's joined us in the Science Department.
My name is Jacob Belcher. I come from Halifax, Massachusetts, just a few towns over. This is my second year in education, first year at West Bridgewater. I come from, I actually taught at my alma mater at Silver Lake. I taught eighth grade general science, and then I decided I wanted to transition to physics, and so I'm excited to join here and teach engineering, robotics, and physics. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jacob. Mackenzie Eldridge is a new instructional assistant at our school. She was unable to be with us here tonight. I'd like to, and Will Harvey as well, another instructional assistant, not new to the building, but was unable to be here this evening. Lucian Lawrence, we were excited to join our staff in the Music Department.
Hi, I'm Lucian Lawrence. I'm the new part-time music teacher. I teach chorus, general music seven, and piano one and two. I come from, graduated from the University of Illinois, to be in May of this year. So this is my first teaching position, but I've been lucky enough to work with students a lot throughout my high school and college career. I was really lucky to be a part of a really strong music program in my high school, and I'm really excited to be able to bring that sort of energy and build up the music program here.
Thank you. We're excited too. Next, we have Andrew Modarelli, who joined us for a long-term year sub in English.
As Ms. Page said, I'm Andrew Modarelli, teaching in the English department this year. A little bit about myself, I've been a Bridgewater native my whole life. I graduated from Bridgewater-Rehnham in two thousand and nineteen, Bridgewater State in two thousand and twenty-three, and now I work in West Bridgewater, so that's really outside my bubble. I also worked in Carver last year, teaching, last year I taught a eighth grade, three-ninth grade, and a journalism class, and this year I have four sections of, five sections of freshmen and one communications class.
Thank you, Andrew. Sarah Premack has joined us in the cafeteria area, unable to be with us this evening, along with Kelly Wilburn, who's doing a great job. She ended as a long-term sub last year for Mr. Finley, who's out, and hopefully will be returning sometime soon. And then Jenna Walla just joined us actually today in the main office, so we're excited. But we're really lucky to have these three that you just met tonight. They're doing a great job so far and look forward to a great year with them.
Hi, this is Jufry with the Howard staff.
I'll start with Erica Morrison, who is a part-time occupational therapist with us. She's not able to join us. She's doing a training tonight, but she has a long history of private practice, and now she's moved into school and super excited to get working with the kids. Back up to the top, I am pleased to welcome Jess Berry, Jess Berry, who is joining our sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Jess Berry. I am in sixth grade at the Howard Elementary. I am in charge of the, well, teaching the projects across curriculum. It's kind of an enhancement course where I'm incorporating all four subjects, and I'm working really closely with my team on meeting students where they're at and their needs and kind of taking it to the next level. So it's really interesting and super fun. I have to say, this is my fourth year in public education and my third year having my own classroom, and the staff here, from central office to my building principal to my team of teachers, has been nothing but amazing in making this a very warm and welcoming experience, so just want to say thank you.
We have Maggie Delano, who's our school psychologist.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maggie Delano, the new school psychologist at Howard School. I've been working for the last two years in the old Rochester District and the elementary school in Marion as a school psychologist. I grew up in the Taunton area and went to school in Berkeley my whole life, so this is very much the, you know, close community of schools and environment that I'm used to, and it's really felt like home already. So thank you, everyone.
Right next door to Maggie, we have Brianna Lacost, and I just have to say, the two of them, I call our hallway the cool kids hall, and they just laugh all day. It's pure joy down that hallway, so.
Hi, I'm Brianna Lacost. I've come from Atterboro Public Schools, and I used to work in a sub-separate classroom, and now I have my own little office, which is cool. So I'm the Registered Behavior Tech at Howard and like to follow everyone else I hear. Everyone in that school is amazing. The kids are awesome, those parents are great, and so is our principal. I can't wait to keep working this year with you guys.
We have Mr. Ryan Otto, who is our new PE teacher for myself and for the Roseell School.
How's it going? My name's Ryan Otto. I grew up in Mansfield, right down the road, went to Westfield State, and I've taught two years, this is my third year teaching. I was in Medway, where I taught pre-K through fourth grade, and last year I was a kid in high school, where I taught freshmen and sophomores. Really happy to be back at the elementary age level, having a lot of fun so far. Everyone's been great, it's been a warm welcome, so I'm happy to get the kids moving and have some fun. Thanks.
Ryan sent me my favorite picture of the year so far with fourth graders playing with the parachute, which is just the best day of school ever anyway, right? With the parachute, but inside the parachute were rubber chickens. And last but absolutely not least, we have Michaela Zukauskis, who is filling in for Jamie Ferreira, who welcomed her little boy Lucas on Saturday.
Hello, everyone. My name's Michaela. I grew up in Hanover. I just moved to Abington. I taught for about two years in upstate New York at a private school, teaching fifth through eighth grade English. Came back home. I taught for two years in the Bridgewater-Rehnham District, fourth grade. So this is my third year in fourth grade, but I saw the opportunity to get into West Bridgewater. I didn't want to pass that up. I've only heard wonderful things, and it's definitely lived up to that so far. And I graduated from BSU, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
I'm going to go out of order. I'm going to start with the fabulous people we have here in person first, so I'd like to introduce Priscilla Dennis, formerly known as Priscilla Trejano, who got married right before school started, just to throw all of us off with names.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Dennis. I'm the new school nurse at the Roseell-McDonald School. I grew up in town, and I recently moved back to town a few years ago when I started my family, and I'm really happy to be back working in the schools. I started my career in hospitals, working with adults. I became a nurse ten years ago, but the last two years I've been subbing in the West Bridgewater School Systems as the nurse, and I loved it, so I was glad to take this position full-time.
And I've only heard fabulous things about Priscilla so far. It's a busy place, the nurses' office. Lots of loose teeth last couple of days. So I'm just going to go over, a lot of the staff couldn't be here today. A lot of them are doing trainings or they have jobs after school, so they send their, you know, appreciation of the invite tonight. Ariana Moth is our school adjustment counselor. She actually started in December of last year, but we never formally introduced her. So she's full-time with us, she's going to be working between the Spring Street School and the McDonald School. Cory Wharton is our new school psychologist. She graduated from UMass Boston and also got her master's in CAGS from William and James University. She's been a great addition to our school. Jenny Warden is our new substantially separate special education teacher. She graduated from Stonehill and Curry College, and she has some experience working in early intervention center and in the Abington School System. January Hancock, for everyone who's come through Spring Street, she was our fabulous kitchen cook, and she kind of went out of her comfort zone over the summer and worked in our ESY program and is doing a fabulous job as a one-to-one instructional assistant so far this year. Eric Watson started with us last year as a substitute teacher. We grabbed him for ESY as well, and he did a great job working with one of our students and has continued working with the student at McDonald's School this year. Amanda Hinckley is currently the long-term sub for Mrs. Sheen, otherwise known as Miss Messina, who's out enjoying her baby at home right now. Amanda was hired, I want to say, five days before school started, and she's settled right in, and the kids are loving her. And Kristy Myers is another instructional assistant who started today. Today was her first day. I think she was a little tired, she couldn't get here today, but she's a parent, she has a current kindergarten student, and she has some background in behavior tech roles, and we're excited to have her. All right, I think that's it for Spring Street. We're on the nurses' role tonight. I'm going to introduce Karissa Moniz.
I'm Karissa Moniz, as Keitha had stated. I grew up in Dayton, Massachusetts, so working in West Bridgewater, I really love the small-town community. I've been a nurse for about eight years now. I started working at Rhode Island Hospital, and then I worked at Providence Community Health Centers in the pediatric population. I've always wanted to be a school nurse, so I'm very excited working at Spring Street as the nurse. Thank you.
And if you think the McDonald's School Nurse is busy, Spring Street Nurses twice as busy. Next, we have Haley Marble as an instructional assistant.
I'm Haley Marble, and I grew up in West Bridgewater. I graduated from the school in two thousand and eighteen, and I'm an IA in the sub-separate classroom in Spring Street School with the preschoolers, and I love it. I'm hoping to be a school adjustment counselor soon, but thank you.
Ally Pratt is another former WB graduate. It really makes me feel old when I'm looking at these people, and I'm like, wait a minute, you graduated in two thousand and twenty, and now you're working for me? So she graduated from the high school in two thousand and twenty. Again, she worked with us in the ESY program, and she has also joined the preschool program at Spring Street. Amanda Metherall had worked for us in the lunchroom and done some substitute and coverage in the office for a couple of years. She wanted to get more involved in the students in the classrooms, so she is also another preschool instructional assistant. She's a parent with four kiddos in the system, three or four. I just keep coming, there's lots of Metheralls in this town, so we're excited to have her. And then Donna Matson and Michelle Santiano are our new kitchen staff, who have done a great job welcoming the kiddos. Today during the fire drill, they were out there shucking corn because they didn't want to waste any time to make sure all of our kiddos got corn on the cob for lunch, so it's been a great start to the year, and we're really excited with our new staff.
Great. Well, welcome to West Bridgewater, all of you. I know most of you have been here since seven this morning, so we're going to take a brief recess. You're welcome to stay, but you all want to get home and get ready for tomorrow. We'll take a brief recess.
So under the superintendent's update, I'm going to call up the principals to kind of combine the opening of school curriculum nights and the newsletter information, but I would like to just start by thanking some of our students who were part of our opening day celebration this year. It was really, someone gave me ideas, so I took the thought and really wanted to integrate, you know, having our kids come to opening day and be in front of our staff, because we're all here for our kids. We do everything we do in schools because of our children, and they should be the focus of everything we do. So I invited two fourth graders, Presley Pangonas and Vinnie Saracino, two eighth graders, Alana Fidalgo and Trey Coulter, and two seniors, Jake Turner and Samara David, to join me on stage, and we do rehearsing, but they really hit it out of the park. They were just great kids, and we just asked them some questions about, you know, what their thoughts were about school and educators and advice that they would give to our educators. And I really appreciate them for giving up their time, and I hope the staff enjoyed seeing them and hearing from them.
Yeah, it was, it was really great, and I, you know, there were a lot of chuckles in the audience, so I think the staff appreciated, appreciated, you know, the levity of it.
Perfect. All right. So if the principals want to come up and talk about the opening that you've had, the, either the past or the upcoming curriculum nights, and just information about your newsletters.
So I'll start. It's been a great opening at McDonald's School. It was almost like seniors, you all kind of were looking at each other.
The parents were great with patience, especially with arrival and dismissal, some of them I see every day, so we appreciate that. Takes a long time to get this, you know, running as well as we have it, so we appreciate the flexibility. The kiddos seem happy, and the teachers are energized and excited for the new school year. The McDonald's, it just seems, everything just seems to, I know I'm cursing myself, but it just seems to be flowing. It's really exciting. Same with the Spring Street. I saw a lot of parent tears on the first day, more parent tears than we saw kid tears, which, sorry to say, I'll take it. We had a grandmother donate a school bus big balloon, which was a huge hit, so we had a lot of, you know, first day of school pictures, which, you know, you can't ever get those back, so that was really exciting, and the parents really enjoyed it. And again, you know, the parents have been very flexible and patient with the buses with Spring Street. You know, there was a little snafu today, too, with, you know, a bus being delayed and then a bus breaking down, and just know that we put out information as soon as we receive it. Mrs. Ellis and Mrs. Shmalinski are amazing with getting that information out as soon as it comes to us, so we appreciate your flexibility. Curriculum night is September nineteenth at the McDonald's School, from five to seven. We run two sessions, the same information twice, so you don't feel like you have to sit through it twice, but hopefully that gives some flexibility to families who have more than one student at the school. Spring Street Curriculum Night is October tenth. It runs from six to seven. Preschool is six to six-thirty, and six-thirty to seven is kindergarten. So we're excited to have parents join us then. The newsletters, we're putting out once a month. If something comes up that we feel that parents need to know in between, we will obviously send out an email, but we're waiting for parents to finish those registration forms online, so we can be posting pictures, because that's, I know a lot of people like to see the smiling faces of what our kiddos are doing every day, so if you have any questions on filling out those forms, just reach out to us, and we can help and walk you through it.
I kind of concur with Keitha. I love the fall. It's great having the students and the staff back in the building. Everyone's energized. It's, I don't want to say smooth, because there's always bumps a little bit along the road, but I think kids are excited to be here. I think the staff is excited to get back to some structure, myself included, having everyone back, but it's just a good vibe. I really feel like it's a good vibe. You met a lot of the new staff this evening, and they've been great. They've been a great addition to, you know, the great staff we already have. But yeah, we look forward to a great year. Again, the newsletter, same with, we're giving them out every first Friday of each month, so if you know of a club or, you know, an organization that wants to post any information out to middle, senior, high school parents and families, please pass it forward. We do have a community section there. Our curriculum night was the other night. I feel like it was well-attended. You know, we had seven through twelve, so we do two separate intros, and then the parents in guardians follow the student's schedule. Because we have, you know, staff that teach both middle, senior, high school, we kind of keep it on the same path. But no, I think all good. I think it's exciting having them back, and we look forward to a great year.
So the Howard Curriculum Night is this Thursday. We are running from five to six-thirty. Schedule went out in the newsletter that went out on Friday, the sixth, so we're keeping our newsletters consistent, so you know when to expect them. In terms of opening, I feel like, I feel like I've always been here at this point. You know, the beginning of school, the, I love that we eased into it the way we did. You know, we had six and a half days by the end of last week, and that was just enough time for the kids to get back into the routines and to get things like star testing out of the way, and now we are really diving into the business of going to school and, and teaching and learning, and I think that feels really good. The only other thing I'll mention is that before that, on the half-day, that very first week of school, it was like our third day of school, we met as a, as a school, all three grades, and identified our pride theme of the month, which is respect. We told the kids how they can earn PBIS tickets, what the prizes would be, and we will be coming together every month at the end of the month to celebrate what they learned about the theme of the month and to preview the theme for the next month. And we're drawing those raffle tickets in front of everyone, so not only do they win, but they get the moment where they get, you know, sort of like the Price is Right, Come On Down moment, so that'll be a fun part of it, too. But yeah, we are, we are just rolling right along.
Again, a huge thank you to our custodial and maintenance staff, our cafeteria staff, our office staff, the people that came in over the summer to help with interviews, our police, the presence has been great, always on the first few days of school. The fire department has done their first fire drills of the year, and the DPW for all their help. And, you know, most importantly, for all of our educators in West Bridgewater, we're very thankful to have all of them. Our kids are very fortunate, I think, to have the educators that they have working with them and the administrative team, so it was a great start.
Oh, it was great. Thank you.
MSBA update. So this is evolving. We did have a selection through the Designer Selection Panel. Meeting number two, on August twenty-seventh, we met with the MSBA on August thirteenth, the Designer Selection Panel, meeting number one. At this meeting, we did select HMFH as our architect and designer. They came to the School Building Committee meeting on the twenty-seventh in the evening and did a presentation, which was great for the School Building Committee, get to meet them and ask some questions. As an administrative team, we have a visioning work plan kickoff meeting this Wednesday, where we'll get more information from our educational planner, which will drive the next three to four weeks of information. Over the next couple of weeks, from September, the week of September sixteenth to the week of October seventh, we'll be doing some school tours of some local buildings. We'll be having listening sessions with administrative team and others. We'll have two different visioning sessions, both for our educators and also for some community members, so we'll be working on getting those people finalized, and we'll be doing some program workshops, all to create our educational program, which will be submitted to the MSBA sometime late October. So it's really designed to focus on, you know, the architectural needs, what are we looking for in a building, the educational and community goals that we have, and priorities for success for a great building. So we want to make sure we're hearing from all relevant stakeholders, so information will be sent out. People are more than welcome to, you know, come to our full School Building Committee meetings, but also we're looking for input into what we look at. We are a long way away, but this is where the real meat of the work starts in terms of what do we want our school to look like? What are the priorities for our school? What do we vision as important parts? Because once we get into programming and developing spaces, then we'll, you know, we don't really change that as we go. It's a, it's a very exciting time.
Mr. Barrow, how do we determine who will participate in the visioning sessions and in getting that community feedback?
So we're going to learn a lot on Wednesday when we have that kickoff meeting, so we'll be looking for some parents who want to be involved. We'll be looking for community members. We're looking for people who have a vested interest in the schools, so we'll probably be looking at current and past members of school councils, so people who have been, you know, very intimately involved in the schools. I think those are great people who have already volunteered their time to reach out to them. We'll be looking at instructional team leaders. We'll be looking for related services people. We're looking for special ed people, you know, school psychologists, guidance, things like that. So we want to make sure we're EL staff, so we're getting really a well-rounded look, and we're looking for guidance from our educational planner, too, to say, what about this group and how can we integrate them?
Yeah, and people love to give their opinion about finished product, like this building, for example. So if they have an opportunity to give some input before we design a school, then maybe they might have less input about how it should have been done.
Right. And I think, you know, we went through a very similar process for this building many years ago, and I think getting the input was really important, and having sessions with grade-level teams. We're going to see a lot of consistency, but we also may see some things that are a little bit different. So, you know, grade-level teams and groups of people that have specialized interests, because we want to make sure they're built in, and to hopefully to avoid those, you know, wish we should have done this and tried something else. And that's also where it's so important to go visit other schools and see what other schools are doing, because until you see it, you don't, can't sometimes vision what you need or what you want.
Great. It's going to be a busy couple of weeks.
Yes, it is. All right. So I'd like to go through my goals. All right, so I'd like to go through my goals. I put them up here for your review. I'll read through some of it. I don't, I won't read through all, but if you have any questions, please just let me know. My first goal is a district improvement goal about the elementary school building project. And by May 2025, complete all steps required for successful progression through the MSBA building process up through Module 3, thereby establishing and maintain effective communication between the school building committee and the Massachusetts School Building Authority and relevant district stakeholders. So there is a lot that has to happen to move forward. And it's my job to guide that and lead that, so I'll be doing that through a variety of things. We'll have numerous school building committee meetings. We'll be having visioning sessions, although it says within the next six months. It's really probably going to be mostly within the next six weeks, but we will be refining that over the next six months. Collaborating with our OPM, which is PMA and our architect, HMFH, prepare agendas and get ready for all school building committee meetings. Hosting and attending informational nights for all stakeholders during the project. I think that's going to be key, where we're involving people so they can ask those questions. We won't have a lot of definitive answers right now with cost and even really where the building may go. That's going to be part of what we're trying to focus on right now. We're looking at different sites. We know we have limited sites, but we have to make some early decisions to look at where those sites may be so we can, because they'll be doing a lot of testing at those sites. Providing bi-weekly updates to the community through a variety of sources. Email, newsletters, school meeting meetings, coffee hours, and informational meetings. Meeting with elementary principals, central office staff, our head of building and grounds. At least monthly, we continue to look at our concerns over overcrowding and how we're going to handle that over the next few years, and school conditions. Making sure the school is still well-maintained, which it certainly has been. It's important to consult with the West Bridgewater Public Safety and our school resource officer to address any needs related to school safety. Completing all required paperwork during eligibility period, including the educational program, which is our first big deliverable in October as part of the preliminary design program submission within the designated timelines, and leading us through Module 3, which is a feasibility study, and into Module 4, schematic design of the MSBA program. So I think there's, again, a lot to do. It's going to be very interesting. It's going to be a lot, I think it's going to be a lot of fun to talk about it. It'll be a lot of work to get through.
Ask a question?
Sure.
It's my own lack of understanding, so it's not a facetious question. When we went to town meeting, right? Do we ever go, I know we have the sessions that are recorded and we can watch them. Do we ever go back to give an update, or do we, like, to the people in the town? Or no? Is that just solely the purpose is for voting, or?
Well, our school building committee meetings are taped. So those are out there. I think we will be doing something with cable giving updates. Gary Keith, our school building committee chair, myself, PMA. I think that's a great idea, because I think we should be putting information out every step, maybe even just a recap, putting links into the newsletter, so people hear what we're doing at our meetings. Because people may not watch the whole meeting, but if we can summarize the progress, I think is important. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, yes, kind of. I just was, I know we go into the town for people to vote, but I wasn't sure if we ever go back in between the phases to say, this is where we are.
Well, what we'll be doing is the goal is to come out with a preferred option. And that's the job of the school building committee, to look at all options that are presented, all grade configurations, locations. And the school building committee will make that recommendation, and that will go to town. When that goes, before that goes to town meeting, there'll be a lot of information provided. So they are hearing everything from cost to grade configuration to site plans to traffic concerns, grade-level concerns, and so forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just interject? So the next time we formally go before town meetings, like Mark mentioned, will be when we present the final design and the cost, and people will vote on the cost.
Okay, yep.
So we'll present to the town multiple other avenues, but the town meeting is purely financial.
For the avenue, for, okay.
And I think we're on target. January 2026, I think, is the earliest we can go to town meeting. So again, there's a lot of time in between, but there's also a lot to do and a lot to put out there. The next goal is an instructional leadership goal under student learning. It's really my job to be the instructional leader in the district and to work with our administrative team. So the goal reads, by May 2025, establish and implement a written communication tool to be used following administrative observations in collaboration with building and district administrators, provide timely, effective, and meaningful feedback, and follow up quarterly. So the way, so the actions I will use to accomplish this goal is scheduling bimonthly walkthroughs at each of the school buildings with the building principals. I'll be in the buildings more often than that, but we'll be doing these structured walkthroughs, similar to the structured walkthroughs that principals do for the educators in the classroom. So the next one is, I have created a Google form, administrative walkthrough form that will be used to guide my discussions. It'll consist of having a pre-meeting, talking about what we're going to be looking for in the classroom, observing what they're doing while they're in the classroom for our building principals, and then the post-meeting. What did we see? How do we discuss it? And recommendations and accommodations that they see as good practice back to the educators. So I think it'll help guide them. The district administrative team will also, will do quarterly, at least quarterly walkthroughs as a team. We have done them in the past, usually at our admin meetings. We will meet rather than in my office. So we could do it there and do Spring Street walkthroughs. We'll try to meet at the different buildings. The only problem sometimes we're having is finding a space to meet in the other buildings. And we've already identified the Howard. We may have to walk from Spring Street. So you may see a big group of us walking over to Howard from Spring, because we don't have the meeting space over there. I will meet quarterly with the principals and the director of curriculum to talk about the middle, senior, high school coordinators, as well as the elementary instructional team leaders, and review effectiveness in planning for the year. Again, it's something we talk about pretty regularly, but do it at least quarterly. Bimonthly meetings with the following staff, the building principals, business manager, director of curriculum, director of student services, director of technology, food service director, and director of building and grounds. Again, happening for many of them almost daily, but scheduling meetings to make sure we are touching important things within the district. It's always important for me to be visible in the schools and in the classrooms, at least 80% of the school days, to interact with students and staff. And it's not just being outside, it's going into classrooms. I observed a wonderful lesson today in Mrs. Gothier's class. It was a book they read and about the heart and getting wrinkles on it when students weren't being kind, and they crunched up the little heart, and then they smoothed it out. It was a wonderful little lesson for the students. They hung the heart in my office. When I have kids down and we have, we need to have a little conversation, we can talk about the crumpled-up heart. Administrative team will discuss this quarterly, our professional development plan for the district to make any adjustments necessary. We met today. We have set a deadline of this week to finalize a professional development plan so we make sure we can share that out and get people signed up on the professional development days. And it's also important to make sure we are thinking ahead to next year. So in May or June of this year, we can talk about what our plans are for the following year. And the final goal is a, it's a professional practice goal, has to do with communication. By May 2025, identify three consistent areas of strength and three areas of growth within the district through establishing two-way communication with multiple sources, students, family, and staff, and share these areas of strength and development with the school community. So we'll continue to send out the monthly newsletter, Wildcat Pride, be visible again in the schools, at least 80% of the school days. Conduct morning visits at all four schools, at least once a month during arrival. My high fives tend to dwindle at the high school level, but they're pretty strong at the elementary level. But I do enjoy seeing them come in. And I enjoy seeing the administrators out there greeting the students when they come in. I think it's a great way for the students to start school every day by having people out there greeting them. I will host, once again, the monthly coffee hours in person, as well as a virtual option. So my first meeting is this Friday. Probably tomorrow or Wednesday, I'll send out the Google Meet link, so people can join remotely as well. After each of the coffee hours, I've created a coffee hour feedback form and learned how to do my own QR code. So even if they're virtual, I can put this up there and have people give me some feedback on the coffee hour experience, because we want to make sure it's, not just it's done, but make sure it's meaningful and we're gathering good feedback and getting some information to move forward. And the principals will also be doing something very similar. So I think that's, that's good to get the feedbacks we're hearing from the families. Meeting with high school students. I have a superintendent council meeting once a month, and I get great feedback from them. I can gather that data. Providing monthly updates to students, staff, and families and community through emails and social media posting. I think we try to do that as often as possible. And then the next few actions have to do with sending out climate and culture surveys to students, staff, and the community. That's going to be the bulk of gathering information, doing that by the end of October to hear what people have for thoughts and ideas. I think feedback is important, so we want to create a form that people feel comfortable sharing their thoughts. And if they want, you know, for the both, any of the feedback forms or surveys, we welcome having that talk back and forth, but if they do it anonymously, that's fine, because we're gathering feedback.
So I appreciate these goals. Two things I want to say. First, that you developed your goals based on our feedback last year. So I appreciate that very much. And I think especially the, obviously, the first goal is something that you have to do anyway to advance our district. And so, and it's going to be a lot of work, so it's important, I think, to establish that as the goal. But the second, or goals two and three, that they're kind of starting points for growth over a longer term. I also appreciate that you have the action plan in there with benchmarks, so that we know if you're on track. You'll know if you're on track and that you're, you're doing the steps aligned with the goals.
Thank you. All right.
Anything else?
I was going to try and say something like that, but Robin, no. It would have been great.
No, these are really, these are really great goals, and thank you for bringing this to the table.
You're welcome.
Okay, so our next order of business is homeschool requests. You all have the homeschool requests in the folder. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to review them. So annually, we must approve these. They have been reviewed by Lorna Ibbotson, who is filling in for Kathy Marble, and they do align with legal guidelines and our policies. So I'm going to make a motion, move to accept the homeschooling requests as written before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? Anyone have any questions or anything? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, and next. Oh, thank you, Maureen. Yes, we do actually have to approve the superintendent goals. So aside from just discussing them, we need to approve them. So move to accept Mr. Bodwell's three goals as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, moving on, the athletic handbook.
So I missed having the athletic handbook on last month, or the, I think it was August 23rd. The only change to the handbook was the updated, the MIAA has updated their website. So the link in the athletic handbook reflects that. There was no other language change.
Christine, I just had one question about, you know, I know there's been buzz in the community before about, you know, holidays or vacation time, school vacations and athletics, like the winter break, April times, even right after the December holidays.
Sure. And those are things individually that, you know, that the student athlete would speak with the coach at a varsity level. I think you're expected to be at practice. You've made a commitment to the team. But those are things that individually with the coach typically, you know, if there's an event, a family event, you know, a wedding or things like that, but just to go, I think. I think family vacations are important, but also committing to your team is as well. So those are things where with the.
Coach, you know, maybe, you know, probably guardians, you know, the, you know, those sorts of things. But we certainly want to, you know, we don't want to discourage families from taking vacations, but we also know that it's a communication. And those expectations, I think, you're, you know, when you're out there, you know that you're complying, you know, obviously, there's, you know, every vacation, you know, pretty much doesn't run with that. So they go with spring. So again, I think it's, you know, talking with the coaches and the board, when those are.
Nothing else? Okay. Move to accept the middle, senior, high school athletic handbook as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Mrs. Goulet, donations?
My huge thank you back to the PTO and continuing to issue the many backers for supplies, torches, candles. Everything burning was giving lots of candles, markers, blue sticks, folder. You know, it was great that everyone had something, so that was a huge thing. It's a huge undertaking for the PTO, but the teachers can show the people as well. Appreciate it.
That is fabulous. So typically, we vote to approve donations. I feel as though, I mean, do we want to approve the specifics of what the PTO has donated? Or shall we add it to our list of donations and do it all at once? Your thoughts?
I think we have a spot on the spreadsheet where we can, where we track whether or not we've, but we never got down to the item as, like, the itemized level for that stuff.
All right, so we'll just keep tracking it?
It's on the spreadsheet.
Perfect. It's on the spreadsheet. Thank you to the PTO. All right, Mr. Schmier, the CPAC update.
The mission of West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy, and opportunities for education and community building. We'll be kicking off our events with an information table at each of the school's curriculum nights this fall. Please stop by to meet CPAC board members, ask questions, learn more about us, and join our mailing list. Just a reminder that CPAC meetings are open to the public and will be held on the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM in the middle, senior, high school learning commons. In the words of Inga Beal, "We all have the ability to promote a culture of acceptance and inclusion." As a parent, you do not need to have, you do not need to have a student with a disability to get involved with Inclusion Matters. We are a network of families who understand and care. For more information about the West Bridgewater CPAC, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmatters.com.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, on to policies. Move to open the following policies for review at our October meeting. BHC, school committee staff communications. BIA, new school committee member orientation. BIBA, school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops. BID, school committee member compensation and expenses. BJ, school committee legislative program. BK, school committee memberships. CCB, staff relations. CE, administrative councils, cabinets, and committees. CH, policy implementation. CHD, administration in policy absence. And CM, school district annual report. Is there a second? Discussion? Let's move into the list.
Just making through.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the policies that we have open. This is, they're, they're pretty hefty, so we're going to put some time and thought into this. So move to adopt the following four policies, which would be new. So move to adopt the following four policies, which would be new to our, to our index. Or they're written, they're fully new by MASC. So it's ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation. ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. And ACGB, Title IX, sexual discrimination grievance procedure. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on these.
Yes, so I'm going to read some of these since these are newer and they're going to be moved to our annual review every year. So ACA-R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IV, including sex-based harassment, outlines that the Title IV, for the Title IV coordinator, each district must designate at least one employee as the coordinator to oversee compliance with responsibilities. Response to allegations, schools must take reports of sex discrimination seriously and respond promptly and effectively to end any discrimination, prevent its recurrence, and remedy its effects. For supportive measures, the school should offer supportive measures to both the compliant, complainant, and the respondent during the grievance process and grievance procedures. The policy outlines specific procedures for handling complaints, including the possibility of informal resolution if agreed upon by all parties. For ACAB, sex and sex-based harassment and retaliation. This was a policy that we had on the policy index back in 2022. It was called sexual harassment. We had rescinded as it was absorbed into policy AC. It's come back up, and it's now, it's its own standing policy. This policy is to comply with the Title IV regulations, which prohibit discrimination on the basis of sex in educational programs or activities receiving federal finance assistance that ACAB policy outlines, the procedure for addressing and preventing sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation within schools. It includes definitions of harassment, the process for filing complaints, and the steps the school must take to investigate and resolve these complaints. Just going to move my mouse. ACAG, Civil Rights Grievance Procedure. This is designed to maintain a school environment free from discrimination, harassment, or retaliation based on race, excuse me, race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, sex, sex orientation, gender identity, age, or disability. Some of the key points for this, points for the procedure, scope, procedure applies to all school-related activities and events covering administrators, personnel, students, vendors, and other individuals. As a reporting aspect, individuals can report incidents of discrimination or harassment to school officials. Retaliation against those who report and/or cooperate in investigations is strictly prohibited. Disciplinary actions, those found guilty of discrimination, harassment, or retaliation may face disciplinary actions, including reprimand, suspension, termination, or expulsion. And then there was some non-applicability to the Title IV, which states that sexual harassment allegations, which are handled separately under Title IV, sex discrimination and grievance procedures, do not apply. Policy ACGB, Title IV, Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure. They're all relatively about the same themes. The key points were, the policy ensures that the school district does not discriminate based on sex, sex orientation, gender identity, and/or related factors in education program activity. The grievance procedure, again, the procedure provides a prompt and equitable resolution to complaints. It applies to all allegations of sexual discrimination and harassment under Title IV, including sexual harassment. Scope, the procedure covers incidents that, excuse me, that occur both on and off school grounds, as long as they are related to the school's educational program and activity. Retaliation, again, the policy strictly prohibits retaliation against individuals who report sexual discrimination or harassment or participate in the investigation. And definitions, the policy includes detailed definitions of what constitutes sexual discrimination and harassment to ensure clarity and proper handling complaints.
Okay, so kind of on a high-level summary, these are very detailed. If we think about the, the previous policies, and this applies to the policies that we'll discuss in the second, the next motion, the policies that we had, they're much more detailed, and they're much more clear. The grievance procedures will be posted on the district website once we have updated them and put them in the policy index. And once the policy index is updated, we do keep copies of the redlined PDFs, which are accessible from the policy index. So if anyone wants to go through and see the differences and see what the changes are and when they were made, they can do that. Any questions on these? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so move to adopt the policies, the following five policies. AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. AC-R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability. And JICFB, bullying prevention. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Okay, so AC also has some significant changes. As I mentioned before, the, one of the sexual harassment policies back in 2022 had been incorporated into AC, has now been extracted out. It's a standalone, but in addition to that, they have really made some changes. So for AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. This policy has been redesigned to ensure a fair and respectful environment, prohibiting discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. It applies to all members of the community, including employees, students, and visitors. Non-discrimination in this policy, the policy prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, age, and/or any other protected characteristic. Everyone is entitled to equal opportunities and fair treatment in all aspects of their interactions with the organization. Harassment, this policy defines harassment as unwelcome conduct based on a protected characteristic that creates hostile, intimidating, or offensive environment. This includes sexual harassment and other forms of inappropriate behavior. Retaliation, retaliation against individuals who report discrimination or harassment or participate in investigations is strictly prohibited. The policy ensures that those who speak up or participate in revolving issues are protected from negative consequences. So that was the big one. AC-R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. There was a tiny edit that you'll see in there, like a tiny edit. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. It was retitled from, from Title IV, sex discrimination and sexual harassment, and the changes to this policy focus on the Title IV coordinator roles and responsibilities. ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, no major edits. The only real change to point out is that in this policy, there were, there was more robust language added surrounding the role of the compliance coordinator, which was previously called the ADA/504 coordinator. And then GI, JICFB, the bullying prevention, no changes in this one at all. The only thing that came up when we were reviewing this one was, I guess we had a question, and I, I don't believe we asked it, was if we're tracking incidents of bullying? Do we keep?
Yes. Yeah, we, we do track incidences and allegations of bullying. It's all reported to the state, and we track them using Aspen. Everything's inputted into Aspen. Did I say that accurately? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So some of these, I know we talked last month about reopening the handbooks to put these non-discrimination policies in, so I'd like to add that to the agenda for next month, as well as the bullying plan, since there's no change to the bullying policy. I imagine there likely won't be any changes to the bullying plan, but we do need to review it annually anyway. Okay, warrants, moving on. Just a moment here. Okay, so warrants for September 9th. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2025. Bill warrants on August 1st, 2024, for $86,185.90. August 8th, 2024, for $127,884.24. August 15th, 2024, for $58,215.86. And August 22nd, 2024, for $95,167.92. The following three payroll warrants were issued for fiscal year '25. August 2nd, 2024, for $510,435.50. For August 16th, 2024, for $11,651.8. And August 30th, 2024, for $518,022.24. As always, all warrants are public record, and ones signed are available in the selectmen's office for review. Okay, moving on to public comments. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during public comment. Anyone for public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Our next regular school committee meeting is Aug-, not August, October 7th, at 6:00 PM here at the middle, senior, high school learning commons. We also have lots of stuff coming up in the district, which you can find in the newsletters, on the district website, and in the WV app. Move to adjourn our meeting, close our meeting. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everyone.